Counselor Safadi?
Here.
Counselor Will?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Gallagher?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum?
Here.
All right, if we could stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we do have some signups here for people if you'd like to speak. Please sign up, and I think there's two sheets, one for regular and then one if you want to speak regarding Chief Tovary. I'm going to go on to item 4B. I'm going to hold item 4A until later in the evening. It won't be long, though. I'm going to do 4B first, and that'll be City Manager.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chief. You get to do this as one of your last acts.
Could you come up here, please? You have to stand very close to me, right here? Don't be shy.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, City Council, and everyone in attendance. You know, sometimes as a chief, you're called upon when things are going bad and you have to think of good things to say. Well, this particular occasion, I don't have to think about good things to say. There's been some people in the course of my career here at the village in the last 10 years that have been of great assistance to me, and I won't remember all of the names tonight, so I apologize immediately for all of that. But last week, or last couple of weeks, we gave a volunteer award to Ms. Jen Difindal for all the help that she's given us with statistical data, and that was a lot of fun, and she's had some good times with the police officers. But tonight, I wanted to turn our attention to somebody who has been very important to this police department and me personally. When I very first got here in 2012, then City Councilman Griffin asked, "Chief, what do you think about a police foundation?" And I thought, "Oh, my God, I have so much to do. I don't have that kind of time right now." But we talked about it, and like many things that have to do with this police department, we never ever forgot about it. And so it took all of the skills that someone like Mark has to make this a reality for this police department in this city, and I think it's going to be a great benefit for both. So I wanted him to come up here tonight, and I wanted to make this official. He can take this to his office or something, I don't know. This award is the Cherry Hills Village Police Department Police Distinguished Service Award, presented to Mark Griffin with profound gratitude for your steadfast commitment and dedication to the creation and stewardship of the Cherry Hills Village Police Department Foundation established 2021. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. If you'd like to say something. I have about a three-hour speech prepared, but thank you, Chief. It's been wonderful working with you, but I don't want to take all the credit for this. It was a collaboration, our board, my wife, Jan Harrison, Jeremy Abelson, and others here, the mayor, Afshin, et cetera, and we got it done. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, now I'm going to move to audience participation if anyone would like to speak about something not involving the chief. I promise I'll give you everyone a chance to speak to the chief later. We have one speaker, Laura Christman, on zoning, if you'd like to speak.
Mayor, there are two signups, one for the chief, aye, and one, so you're in the chief later?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Laura Christman, 18 Cherry Lane Drive. Zoning codes, okay? I will tell you that Paul has been beyond wonderful. Where is he? Oh, well, he was afraid I was going to come. You know, we were worried about horses and bees, which were prohibited for reasons that none of us know, but in this process, in order to take it back to where we were, I reviewed the old code and the new code. And the new code was a modernization that was supposed to kind of clean up issues. I went to many of those meetings, as I know you guys did, and it didn't cause me a lot of concern. It sounded like they were doing that. However, I will tell you that the new code has serious problems with it, and it's not just horses, and I'm going to give you two examples. One, and oh, I did keep going out of my thing, and Paul was very good. One is that, as you recall, we spent a lot of time figuring out medical marijuana and private-use marijuana and how it can be contained in the home and how many plants, et cetera. Great. New zoning code, under the new zoning law, you may not grow marijuana anywhere in the village, period. Where'd that come from? There's a definition of extensive livestock. The general definition from the federal government of intensive livestock is a thousand head within, it's quite a small area, it might be an acre. Excuse me, it's not head, it's units, so cow and calf, pig and piglets. So when someone wrote the code, they said there's no, you cannot have extensive livestock in agricultural use. They then redefined extensive livestock to be one animal per acre. So you can have one chicken. You can't have a bee, so you can't have one bee, no one bees, but you can have one chicken, you can have one llama, you could have one horse. Where did this come from? Paul doesn't know where it came from, I don't know where it came from, and that is one of many. Another one that I know members of our community are concerned about because they're calling me is where did the guesthouse stuff come from? And why haven't we had a discussion on guesthouses? And why can you build, including basement, a 4,000-square-foot guesthouse that goes 35 feet high? So there's a lot of things that are not minor, and it's not fair. Paul and Ethan have been working like dogs, trying to identify all of the issues that they don't understand and what seems to be inconsistent. That's not a good use of their time. I mean, they've done a lot, but you can't fix this piecemeal. So I can fix the horse thing, and I can fix the bee thing, but I would like to talk to council and to planning and zoning a little more about bees, chickens, and horses before I do that. But there's a lot of other things that I'm very concerned about that were not minor changes, and I went to those meetings too, and all I heard were minor changes. "Oh, by the way, you cannot have intensive aquaculture in the village? That's 100,000 pounds of fish a year." Why do we even have that in the code? Unless somebody's actually worried about it. So that's really what I want to say, because I will tell you that Paul and Ethan, I think, are really doing an exceptional job, but they, this is not a good use of their time. So that's all I have, and I'll update you on horses and bees at another time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Christman. Any other reports? Now, moving on to the next item, reports from boards, commissions? Don't see any. Next item, 7A, consent agenda, approval of minutes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 10A, boards and commission members, that would be City Clerk Golesby.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of City Council. Staff is asking for a little bit of council direction tonight about several board and commission member terms that are coming up in May. There's a table in the memo showing that most of these members have expressed desire to be reappointed, and so staff is asking for direction on that. There's only one where the attendance record was a little low, and staff has contacted that member and confirmed that they reaffirmed their commitment to attending meetings. There is one member that does not wish to be reappointed, so we will have a vacancy on the Art Commission, and so staff is asking for two members of council to assist with that process, reviewing applications and doing interviews and making recommendations. And staff's happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Laura, or direction? What's the pleasure of council?
I'm comfortable moving forward with all these reappointments.
But we do have one that does not wish to be reappointed, so we would need to recruit for that as well. Okay.
And I'd like to, I'd like to at least point out to those who are in the room, who are on some of our boards, Rob Eber, thank you for your service on these boards, and anyone else who I've missed that are on boards in the room, and for your stellar attendance record as well.
Okay, do you have your direction?
Do we have any council members who would like to assist staff with the vacancy? Randy, great, can review applications and such? Anyone else? Katie?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we are actually going to, unless there's, without objection from council, pass over reports tonight and get on to the chief's presentation. I'd like to start off that presentation with a proclamation. It's very nicely done and nicely written by our staff, and just proclaims today as Michelle Tovary Day. Whereas Michelle Tovary has served as the Chief of Police of Cherry Hills Village since April of 2012, and whereas Chief Tovary has served almost 39 years in law enforcement, and whereas Chief Tovary has overseen many accomplishments during her tenure as Chief of Police of Cherry Hills Village, including reducing crime, participating in national night-out events, drug-take-back events, city special events, HOA meetings, faith-based community meetings, and the Cherry Hills Land Preserve Barn Tour, coordinating with national regional organizations, providing service to sister jurisdictions in light of duty, line-of-duty funerals, providing services for dignitary visits, safety drills for schools in the village, assisting sister jurisdictions with promotional processes, continued training for officers, including critical incident training, FBI leadership classes, in-service firearms defensive tactics, driving simulator, and legal updates, assisting neighborhood jurisdictions during the shooting incident at Rabo High School in 2013, achieving state accreditation since 2013, establishing the School Resource Officer Program in 2013, managing multiple agency collaborations for the 2014 BMW Championship Golf Tournament at Cherry Hills Village Country Club, keeping residents safe during the June 2015 flood, reinstituting and enhancing the motorcycle unit in 2016, developing, designing, and providing training for all city employees regarding emergency situations in 2016, supervising two significant death investigations in 2017, seeing the community and the department through the officer shooting during a home invasion in 2018, publishing the Community Crime Map in 2019, implementing the new records management system in 2019, modifying service and plans to meet the challenge of COVID-19 in 2020, and partnering with Metro Crime Stoppers and United Data Connect to achieve an arrest in the 1981 cold case homicide of village resident Sylvia Quail in 2021, which I understand is in trial now, currently, as we speak. And whereas Chief has served in a manner which embodies the mission of Cherry Hills Village Police Department, to promote strong community partnerships while providing courteous, professional, and ethical police service. Now, therefore, the City Council of Cherry Hills Village recognizes and honors Michelle for her outstanding leadership in public service while making Cherry Hills Village a safe and strong community, and proclaims March 1st, 2022, as Michelle Tovary Day in the City of Cherry Hills Village, presented at the regular City Council meeting this first day of March 2022. I would like to counsel now, to give a chance to counsel, to say a few words, if you wish, about the chief, starting with down the line.
Chief, well, thank you for your service. I've known you for the past four years, and I think what speaks highly of how well you've done for this community is the officers you train, because obviously, we have not had any contact with anything where we needed your services, but your officers have been very responsive, and I think that that's well reflected in the service that you've given us. I want to thank you.
Chief, in addition to fabulous job you've done here for our village for the last decade, I wanted to tell a story that you and I shared together to the rest of everyone here tonight. Before I was on City Council, and we'd not met before, my dad was ailing, he was starting to get sick with dementia, and he, as an ex-police officer himself, had accumulated a whole bunch of firearms over his career. And we didn't know what to do with them as he was starting to get sick, and so I called the Chief of Police in the city that I lived in, and I said, "What do I do with all these guns?" This was maybe seven years ago, maybe, I don't know exactly when, but she said, "Well, pack them up and bring them on down. If nothing else, I'd love to see the collection, I'd love to meet your dad." And so he and I came down here, and for the first time, I met with the chief, and we opened up the cases and looked at these firearms, and she just gave us a little bit of advice, and she was very kind to my dad, who was, at that time, starting to lose his mental faculties a little bit, and it was really a moment that, of kindness that you provided to my dad, and because you made him feel important, and that was really a good moment for me, and something I look back on, I've since lost my dad, and anyway, it was a moment outside of probably the daily accolades that you and your officers get, and I just wanted to say thank you for that memory and that moment for me, it's something I'll remember. Thank you.
Chief, I haven't had the opportunity to get to know a police chief, and it has just been this wonderful seven, eight years of being able to, it's dealing with you before these meetings and having dinner with you, and you realize what a wonderful person you are. Your social intelligence, your emotional intelligence is significant, and it is shared with your, in your workaday life. Thank you for your professionalism, and I wish you all the best in this new chapter.
So in addition to all of the accolades that have been thrown at you recently and the enormous list of accomplishments, I just wanted to say that I've lived in Cherry Hills Village for 18 years. I was appointed to City Council about six months after you became our chief, so you're really the only chief I've ever known and worked with, and I just want to say that in that 18 years, and definitely in the last 10, there is not a moment that I have ever feared for my safety living in this city, and I mean that sincerely, even maybe in times where I should have, right? Not that we haven't had any bad things happen here, but I have never feared for my safety, and that is a testament to our entire force, but really to your leadership of that team of officers. So thank you to all of you who serve us so well. But beyond just being our police chief, you're an important part of the leadership of this city. You're part of the team, and we really couldn't have done it without you all of these years. I remember a time where you personally backed me up. I don't know if you remember it, but I remember it very well, and I just wanted to say thanks. You know, I think that it's one thing to run a highly effective police department, but then to also be able to be part of the team, put the interests of the city and the citizens first. You've gone way beyond being just our chief of police, so we will miss you greatly.
I have to echo everything that they've all said. It's been a pleasure. I mean, the interactions, the personal interactions have been great, great individual. I read your reports religiously every month, and they're very informative, and I think at the end of the day, I certainly resonate with the comment that, you know, we're, I feel safe here, and that's my resident hat rather than my city councilor hat, but still, it's, you know, that's the truth, I do, and that's a credit to you and the team that you've built and managed and lead. So I want to wish you the best of luck, and we were fortunate to have you, and hope you won't be a stranger, come back and visit. Thanks.
So, Chief, I had prepared a nine-page, you know, statement about you, but they asked me to keep it to less than five minutes. So, three quick points. One is that I hope you are proud, we are proud, of the legacy that you're going to leave us, and the legacy is the police department as of today, what you have built. This is an amazing police force, department, and it's because of you, so thank you. The second thing is, I want to make sure that you realize the impact that you have had as a role model to a lot of little girls in our village, including my two girls. The idea of having a chief of police that is so kind, and it's a woman, but it still carries a gun, and can be nice, but chase people still. So many, I would say, qualities that they look at you and they admire, so I want to make sure you realize that. I actually wanted to go to a daycare and have them actually paint all of them what they think about police chief, I just didn't have time, so maybe in the next life. But the last thing here is that, thank you for being you. You are an amazing person, individual, human being, and I like to believe at least you have rubbed some amazing qualities on me that I hope I can capture a little bit of it and move forward, so thank you. And the last thing is, I hope you can come to my annual parties. You're not a policeman or woman anymore, so you can come to my parties. Thank you.
Okay, we'll have now audience participation, sign up and see if anybody would like to speak. Here's your. Here's your chance, and everybody should stay after we adjourn. Don't rush off, because we'll have cookies and refreshments, and you can, we can mingle. All right, number one, Mr. Thorson, former city manager, thank you for coming tonight. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. It's good to see everybody. I try to make a habit of not showing up to councils where I was city manager, because they tend to blame you for everything once you come back, so, but this occasion definitely deserved me to come back and say a few words about Michelle, and it's good to see our new city manager and city attorney, and it's good to see everyone again. If I could have Michelle come up here, because I want her to feel as uncomfortable as possible. Hi, Chief.
What's up, Jim? Remember, she's still the chief.
And she's still packing heat, I know.
Did you need a handkerchief or something?
So, and just to be here, I had
And, and just to be here, I had to dust everything off and, and try to get somewhat appropriate apparel on tonight. But I just want to say, you know, this city has been extremely, extremely fortunate to have Chief Tovary here. You know, in my career of 35 years in municipal government, I've met sheriffs, undersheriffs, captains, lieutenants, sergeants, and chiefs. And I got to say, I've never had a chief as good as Michelle. She has the pulse of the community right here. She has their safety in her heart and she's looking out for everybody here. And she has done such a great job training these fine men and women behind us and leaving quite a legacy. I know that they always say, well, you're, you're leaving big shoes to fill. And she is. I don't think Shaq could fill these shoes. They're, they're quite something. But you know, when the chiefs retire, they don't really retire. They're still chiefs. And, and so I thought about it and I, I thought, well, you know, she's going to be chief of her block. And, and, and I needed something to recognize that. So I, I, you know, I've got a little bit of time on my hands, so I've kind of put something together for the chief.
Oh, seriously?
You can get this home, I'm sure. So first things first, I know you can't hear me in the microphone. You have, you have everything here you need to be chief of your block. First of all, you got the American flag, which obviously you need that if you're going to be chief of the block. Let everybody on the street know who's in charge. Second, you've got, and by the way, I did a little red just for your Nebraska Cornhuskers.
Thank you.
And, and as you always told me, the big N stands for knowledge. Right. Yes. When things get really rowdy in your neighborhood, you've got something to chase the 10-year-olds away. So you got that. It's handy. It's, it's left-handed, but. And you're packing heat? It fits and it, it does fire. You can hit any cat or dog from 80 feet with this thing.
Rabbits.
Right there. You've got, you've got snacks so you can be out there all day long, monitoring, protecting your block. And then you've got a cooler. In that cooler, some libations for you, because I'm sure you're going to enjoy those. There's a six-pack of beer that my own daughter made every one of those beers in there. So hopefully you enjoy them. And there's a little something else in there. So I just wanted to let you know that all of this is yours for the taking. Oh, that's right. That's secret. But I just want to say, congratulations. You deserve it. I know it's not a, a easy time to be a police officer and you have done nothing but provide just a great atmosphere here in this city. So congratulations.
Very nice. Very thoughtful. Thank you, Jim. That's awesome. Next. Next, Earl, if you'd like to speak.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, I'm not going to be as eloquent or as funny as Mr. Thorson. I don't think anybody can be. And in fact, I didn't even know we were going to be allowed to make these comments. So I was just scribbling things down like, right, right before I came up here, which means it won't be one of my long-winded things, Counselor Sheldon. One of the things though, that since I've been working, since my time started working with the city, I know 10 or 15 years ago, is the quality of our staff, the professionalism, the dedication, the loyalty, the bright, sharp people that we have that really make Cherry Hills Village what it is. And no one epitomizes that though more than, than the chief. And she's just developed an extraordinary police force that, that quite frankly, all the time when I was on council and, and working with the various committees, I'd always hear things like, you know, Kent Denver is the crown jewel of the city. Then in the last few years, it's like Quincy Farms is the crown jewel of the city. The crown jewel of the city is our police force. And in fact, if you see some of the comments coming in on the master plan, that's, that comes down in spades. And you developed this wonderful police force that we all just really, really appreciated everything that they do. And we just can't, can't thank you enough. Now, one of the other things too, is obviously we know that, that police almost inherently, they're, they're courageous, they're strong, they're fearless. And we've got that in spades along with you. But sometimes there's other things, there's other types of courage and, and people don't know about it. And one of my favorite movies is It's a Wonderful Life. And as we all know, that's the movie about, hey, how do you impact things, you know, if you weren't really around? And clearly, we know that Michelle, that things would be a very, very different with regard to our police force. But because of Michelle's principles, because of her ethics, and because of her courage to stand up for those, you can sit back and say that had it not been for her, we probably wouldn't be sitting in this building today, or at least maybe not at this time. Because if it wasn't for her courage and principles, we wouldn't have had Jim Thorson. And that's the reason that we're here today. So even in things that people don't even understand or may not even be aware of, the impact that this lady has had on our city is, is just immense. And it's just been an honor to have worked with you over these years. And it's been a real privilege to call you my friend. Thanks, Michelle, for all you've done.
I'm sorry, Laura Christman.
Laura Christman, 18 Cherry Lane. I am so sad that you are retiring. I'm very happy for you. While I was mayor, oh, first of all, these flowers are not just from me. These flowers are from the two councils with which I served. And some of you, we overlap here. Just a couple of things. When I was mayor, you know, you wear that name tag, you forget to take it off, and you're walking through a parking lot and a traffic policeman goes, are you from Cherry Hills? Yes. Well, say hello to the chief for me. I was like, oh, cool. All over the state that happened to me. We're not talking other police chiefs. We're talking officers all over this state, sheriffs and other officers. When we had the shooting incident and Cory was injured at Swedish Hospital, a great many of the officers came when Swedish Hospital did an honor for Cory as he was leaving the hospital. And they came from Arapahoe County, they came from Inglewood, they came. So I made a point to thank them for having served and helped out Cherry Hills. And they looked at me like I was insane. They were, well, of course we did that. You don't need to thank us. We would do anything for Chief Tovary. And that just speaks to the caliber of this woman, this police officer, this police chief, and her leadership. Her leadership wasn't just in our village. Her leadership was throughout the community. And she was instrumental in creating this web of officers and police departments that work together. And we are all safer because of the chief. Last thing, I just want to thank you because I probably have gone to jail during the, subsequent to the shooting, I wanted to let the community, especially Devonshire, know kind of what was going on. And the prosecutor's DA's office pretty much put a gag order on me. And as you can imagine, that did not go down well. And the, the chief literally, probably strangleholed, pulled me off the ceiling and convinced me to keep my mouth shut. So thank you. And if you think you're getting away from me, you are mistaken. Thank you.
Thank you. Former Mayor Doug Tisdale.
May it please the council, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here and particularly under these circumstances. For the record, my name is Doug Tisdale. I had the privilege of serving on the council for eight years. Then I sat out for a while. And then I came back in April of 2012 and I was privileged to serve as the mayor. But my greatest privilege was coming on board back with the city at the same time that the greatest chief that we have ever had came to the city at that time. It was a memorable experience to work with her. Now, both of us have been turned out to pasture. That said, we know that everyone will continue to reach out to you because I'll tell you what, I've never known of a more responsive public servant than Michelle Tovary. When you had an issue, you could bring it to her and she would immediately respond to it and get it resolved. But I have to say, I learned something interesting tonight. I had not realized that you have had a 39-year career in law enforcement. And I have to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, talk about an ambitious woman. She got her first gig when she was six years old. That's just amazing. And I am impressed with all that she has accomplished through those years. So I, I too have something as a, a small tribute to give to the chief because God bless you. You are the best that we've had and it's a thrill to know you. And I will say this, I heard someone use this phrase recently, just this past week, and it, it stuck with me. There will at some point be someone who comes along to fill your seat, but there will never be anyone who can fill your shoes. Thank you, Chief.
And finally, Jim Difindal.
So this is a roast, right? With, this is not a city council? Are you okay with that? Going to be uncomfortable? Can you deal with it? No? Okay, you're okay. No pan in here? All right. Jim Difindal, the first time I ever met you was two months after I moved here. I had never called 911 before. And then I had a break-in with meth addicts trying to strangle someone in my home. And when I met you, I was trying to wrangle up some data and you tried to negotiate with me about how much data I could get. But we became friends and you, not in your right mind, asked, let me volunteer, which last week, as I said, was, it's been such an honor of a lifetime. And what I saw in the data and learned from you, from your leadership, is that you are kind and you are fair and that you are honest and you hire amazing people, maybe except for, I'm just kidding, Parker. But I want to tell you, if you've ever had a violent crime happen to you, you have been instrumental in the healing process. I could not, I can't look at you right now. I can't thank you enough for all the things that you have done for my family. You, like Counselor Savavi has said, you have been everything to my daughters. You have been a champion to me. And I did not expect that. And I just want to say thank you. But one of my funniest stories about you is in July of 2021, when I wanted to come back. Do you know what I'm going to say? I called you and I said, hey, I'm ready to come back. I know it's COVID, but can we do it? And you're like, Jim, I've been on the bike all week. I'm like, what, what do you, do chief of police do this thing? Like, what's going on? There's God that's in my village and not in my village. And we caught him. And it was just the funniest thing. So I'm like, do chief of police do this? Like, I need to like go look and see what they do because I'm not sure. And I'm sure you were not on an e-bike for sure on the trail because that would be weird and maybe possibly ticketed and illegal, but who knows? I'm not saying. It's a roast. But anyways, I just, I thought it was hilarious that you, the dedication you have to our village and our city is second to none. And as I've told you in private, as I will tell you today, thank you for championing our city and for the people of the city. And if it wasn't for you, the suspect of the murder of Sylvia Quail would not be coming to justice already. And I saw that on Friday. They're doing jury selection. So thank you for finding the money for people who have suffered a great deal. And thank you for healing the hearts of the people who have seen, been victims of violent crimes. And like I said, hold your head up high. You have nothing to be ashamed of. And thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're not done. We still have more.
We do.
I'm sorry, did?
Mayor, I didn't sign up, but I'd like to.
Sure. Come on.
Good evening, members of the city council. Good evening, chief. Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity. My name's Robert Eber. I live at 3 Middle Road. Chief, I just wanted to tell you, thank you. We've had a long presence as Ebers in the village. You all and all of the staff and all of your force that have come before you have been at our house many times over many years. Blank Counselor Sheldon, we had a little personal issues, I guess I would say, as my father aged, also with dementia. On December 23rd, my father went AWOL and was found of all places in Truth or Consequences, New Mexico, having taken the car and, and headed out. My son just thinks it's most ironic that it happened in Truth or Consequences, New Mexico, that that was the last day and the last place that he ever drove. When he returned to Denver, the simple fact of the matter is that all of us did not really know what to do next. You, as the police chief, the force, frankly, you taught us just as much as about what to do with going forward. You taught us about dignity. You taught us how to treat. You taught us how to treat somebody who had dementia. He was fairly far along at that point. But I will tell you that every single time the alarm went off or every time he threw his caregivers out of the house, you came, you showed up professionally, ethically, and most important, empathetically, to treat him with the great respect that he deserved and that you were willing to provide to him. Every time you treated it like it was a real call for a break-in because that was the protocol that was in place for you to do that. I think every time you got the phone call and said 5777 South El Camino, you knew exactly what it was. And you knew it was probably not something risky. But at the same time, you treated it like a professional call with the very professionals that you are. My dad, every single time when he wouldn't listen to me, you and all the officers that came to his house, he had great respect for the uniform, but more importantly, he had great respect for all of you and the way you were able to speak to him. I asked you at one point and some of the other officers how it was that you were able to handle these types of situations so well. And the answer that I got back was that you had specific training on how to deal with the dementia that too many people in this village, as the population aged, has gone through. I cannot thank you enough for whether you implemented the training, whether you got the training, all the other guys and women on the force got the training. But every single time you came, you were perfect. Whether it was your leadership or not, I want to know how important, I want you to know how important that is to all of us Ebers, that we knew we were in good hands. We knew that the village was in great hands from a safety standpoint. And we've had an opportunity to become friends and get to know each other a little bit more through my involvement on different city activities. And I just want you to know, I wish you the best. I could stay here like everybody else and heap more praise professionally upon you and the department that you lead. I don't want to do that, but please understand, it's not because it isn't deserved. We'd just be here all night if all of us did that. So it is appreciated. Thank you very much for your service and we wish you the very best on behalf of all of our family.
Okay. All right, next, city manager.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to stay here, if that's all right, because I have a couple of honors and it's going to take me a little bit. And so that I can sit down while I do it, I can also see the audience and see, see council and most importantly, see the chief while I talk about this. I have two, two honors that I'm going to be presenting to the chief. After we're done with my two honors, we're going to come down and take pictures with the proclamation and my two honors that I'm going to be giving the chief. So, so get ready. You'll have some time, though. This will take a little while. We screwed up the order because to have me go after all of these comments was a real mistake. I, I have nothing left to say after everyone has used all the good stuff. I've heard the chief called the, the greatest of all time. You know, the goat. I've also talked, heard about her being put out to pasture, which is also like the goat. So it is, you know, I'm really going to try and, and really try and talk about what the chief has really meant to the, to this community. So the first, the first honor that I have for the chief, and we'll bring this out here more publicly, it weighs a little bit. This is, this is an honor in appreciation for your time here and your years of service and dedication to the citizens and to the police department as the police of chief, or the chief of police. That's, that's 2012, April 30th, 2012 through March 4th. Friday's the last day. So 2022. So this award really speaks to your time here. And I will tell you, as a first-time city manager, there is no bigger blessing than to have Michelle as a police chief. I knew that no matter what issues came around the corner, that we were in good hands. And, and you know, sometimes I think there were definitely times where I needed to make a decision or give some direction. There were also some times where I was looking at Michelle to say, hey, what you got? Help me out here. And she did it, just like everyone has mentioned tonight. She did it with grace and with a real empathy for understanding my situation. I can tell you, in my time here, there, there's a lot of, I've learned a lot about what she's contributed to this organization before I came. And I know that she, I think it was Mayor Protam Brown who mentioned that she often took the, the needs of the organization. She wasn't just looking out for the police department, but really looking out for the community and the organization. And, and I can speak to that. I, I think before I got here, there were certainly many opportunities for the chief to really be bold and courageous and look out for this community in ways that will often, I think a lot of people aren't even going to fully realize. And I think we should say thank you for that. I think there were a, a lot of opportunities for the chief to really establish a culture and a police force that is something that, to a person, I have not had a resident, you know, bemoan or talk negatively about a police force. And let me tell you, in today's day and age, that is the exception. The police are, are under fire and in the crosshairs in a lot of ways that have not been the case in this country for a long time. And through Michelle's leadership, she has put this force into such a standing with our community. I know that residents are grateful. I'm certainly grateful as, as a city manager. COVID hit and, and it had a number of challenges for our police department. It required swift action to talk about changes to policies, how our procedures are going to happen, whether it's traffic stops or something more serious. And the chief was nimble in those actions. She thought of the safety of our officers, but she also thought of the safety of our population and our residents. All of this speaks to her contributions and her, what an amazing, the greatest of all time. And so, you know, I do think this award really is intended to signify and, and give thanks for her time as police chief. So that's, that's honor number one. So we're going to stop there. Yeah. We, we do have, there is on the bottom a plaque. I'm not going to read it from the bottom because it's really heavy. And that says, in appreciation for your years of service and dedication to the citizens and police department of Cherry Hills Village as chief of police, and then the date range that you were here. So that is award number one. The second is going to be an honor for not just your time here, but, but your entire career, the distinguished service award. And I have, I have some, some comments I want to read from. And then I'll have a couple more before we come down for pictures. So this is, this goes along with your distinguished service award. Chief, today we say farewell to a loyal, devoted and respected member of our Cherry Hills Village Police Department and city family. As you embark on your new adventures in retirement, I would like to reflect on your career and dedication to the department, city and citizens. This is going to be a little bit like a, a walk down memory lane or, or that, that show where they would bring back people's teachers and things like that. Yeah, What's Your Life? That's right. You began your career when you were six years old. Oh, no, sorry, that was Doug's statement. You began your career with the Lakewood Police Department on July 5th, 1983, following your graduation from the University of Nebraska at Omaha. You served the Lakewood Police Department in many diverse capacities and continued your personal goal of being a lifelong learner by obtaining your master's degree from the University of Colorado in 2004. You rose to the rank of division chief and along the way, you broke many traditional barriers in policing during your career. You were only the second woman in the 40-year history of Lakewood to rise to the rank of division chief and the first to command the patrol staff, the driving staff and the SWAT team. These accomplishments and others opened the doors for others in the department and set you on a positive path. The Lakewood Police Department has a national reputation and takes great pride in, in the number of chiefs and sheriffs the agency has produced since 1970. On April 30th, 2012, you became the first woman and the 67th member of the Lakewood Police Department to become a chief of police, starting your tenure here at Cherry Hills Village. Your breadth of experience and demonstrated skills in leadership were a positive fit for our city and came along at the perfect time. During your career, you demonstrated concern for many members of the organization who were sick, injured or in a state of bereavement. You also took great pride in your role as a mentor and coach for those seeking professional growth, special assignments, mental and physical health and promotion. These actions served to let employees know the department cares for them personally and professionally. You also developed solid relationships with community members and, and other organizations which benefited the city and the department during these times of crisis and planning for your future, for the future. You have consistently demonstrated professionalism, fairness and dedication. You have been a leader with regard to your work ethic and exhibited a balanced approach to the policing needs of the village. Whether you are attending to the myriad of administrative duties, providing leadership and guidance to criminal investigations, on a bicycle, patrolling for burglars, directing staff or mentoring your staff, your positive attitude has been appreciated by citizens and your coworkers alike. Always striving to move the department forward, the following are a few examples of your accomplishments at Cherry Hills Village Police Department to include facilitated the process with the Colorado Associations of Chiefs of Police for the department to remain fully accredited in 2014 and 2019. Update and craft pertinent policy and procedures, participation and implementation of new records management system with the Rappahoe County, an endeavor which saved the city thousands of dollars, by the way. Procurement and implementation of the e-citation system, which really came in handy during COVID. I know our officers appreciated that. The revitalization of the motorcycle and bicycle units, implementation of the school resource officer, assisted with the groundwork for the creation of the police foundation, worked through many scheduling personnel and safety, health issues during the pandemic, the management of numerous hirings and promotional processes and the oversight of dozens of special events. In addition, you and your staff never gave up on the 1981 cold case involving the murder of Ms. Sylvia Quayle. The efforts of the department resulted in the identification and arrest of the suspect in 2021, an event which brought national attention to Cherry Hills Village Police Department, tremendous pride to the city and relief to the victim's family. Michelle, your career has seen many changes and challenges in law enforcement and I commend you for the leadership you have provided. You created through collaboration the department's expectations of service, procedural justice and accountability, and demonstrated these traits throughout your time with us. Due to your actions, it is with great pride that I award you the distinguished service award for your exemplary service and the profound impacts and contributions you have made in the performance of your duties to move the Cherry Hills Village Police Department forward. Congratulations and thank you for your dedication and commitment to ensure that Cherry Hills Village remains one of the safest cities in Colorado. On behalf of your friends, coworkers and citizens, we wish you success in the future endeavors and much happiness along the way. You have been an asset to the Cherry Hills Village and our police department. All the best to you, chief. You will be missed.
You want to take a picture real quick with that hat? You want to come out real quick for the picture?
Am I eyes open?
All right, and then a point, privilege for the council, if we may come down.
And we're going to do one more real quick, but if you guys can sit down. If you guys want to come up, I'd be great to have a picture with the force.
And so now, we, it is kind of like a roast because Michelle had to sit here through everybody else's comments that I'm sure were impactful. She has the opportunity now to make a few departing comments to all of us.
The what? Very good. I, honestly, I'm, I don't know really what to say after something like this. I am, it's very humbling. It's a very humbling experience to be here and listen to all of the well wishes that have been given to me tonight. And I, I suspect that there might be a bet on, yeah, on if I can get through this without needing the Kleenex, it's in my pocket. I'm not, I'm not in on, I'm not in on this bet, but I, I probably should have been. But so the first thing that I would like to say is that everything that you all have mentioned, I, I did not do this alone. What I believe accomplished here in the 10 years that I've been here has been because I have a staff that would listen. I have a staff that could argue. I had a staff that could be thoughtful. And I had a staff that, that really bought into and recognized what we wanted to do as a team. And that's very important to me. Whether it was developing our, our core values of service, procedural justice, which basically means just talking to people and letting them know what's going to go on, or accountability, which is not always easy because we make mistakes. They assisted me along the way with all of it and I'm, I'm very grateful for that. You know, there's a lot of, there was a lot of conversation about the police department and, and how well we've done, but we're just a piece of the pie with regard to this city. And we've always known that without the help from Jay's crews or from people who manage money and look at me like, what are you doing? To quite frankly, Catherine in HR, and you talk about bravery. There's somebody that I admire greatly also, along with all the rest of the staff, Jay, Jessica, Laura, for goodness sakes, has kept me doing paperwork correctly for 10 years and I'm grateful. But my three core values are, a couple of them were mentioned. Never mistake kindness as weakness. I think all police officers can do their jobs in a kind fashion, but you do not have to be weak to do it. A sense of humor. I think we laugh at ourselves over in that building, probably a little bit more than we should, but I think it's important to hear laughter in the hallways and that was very important to me. And then lastly, always be your true self. And I've tried to do that as much as I can. I like my staff to be able to do that. So all of those three things are the things that, that get you to a career, which I did start when I was 22, by the way, so we can get that math out of the way. But it's hard to not think about how you get somewhere in life. And you, there's very few people, I think, that do it alone. And I, I fully admit that your family is an influence, whether it's your parents. My mother's work ethic is why I'm standing in front of you now. School, going to a police academy. I remember July 5th, 1983, like it was yesterday. I can tell you what I had on. I can tell you I knocked my chair over when I was told to stand to attention and didn't know how to do that. To probably this day that I will remember for a very long time. But it's a profession that has changed a lot over the course of the last few years. And if you don't adapt and you don't change and you don't do the right things, then I don't think you're going to be successful with your citizens. And our staff here has always put citizens first. And I think that's been a very important piece of why we've had success for the last 10 years. I think we've left it better than when I got here, and I'm very proud of that. And so the last thing that I will tell you is that, again, going back to the, the idea of time, um, time is not gold, it's not silver, it's not money. Time is the most important thing you ever have in your life, and it's a commodity that you cannot get back, no matter what you do. And so, um, I've learned a lot about time with a new relationship, and it's very important to me. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm not bright enough to write poems on my own, but I found this the other day, and I'd just like to read it to you. There is time to sit still, time to dream, time to try, time to fail, time to learn, time to get to work, time to play, time to think, time to change your mind, time to start over, time to grow, but there is no waste of time. It's been my honor to serve this community and be your chief. I wish you all safety and be well. Thank you.
Stay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Without, without objection, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for coming, and please stick around a little bit.
We do have refreshments and snacks, so please stick around.